13th, 2020. I'm going to have Mr. Idy bring us up to speed on aspects of zooming in. So, Mr. Idy?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, for the council members, we have opened up the Zoom broadcast to the public. There's 40 attendees on the right side of the panel, 43 now, that have zoomed in. And we are looking at about 75 people that have gathered here at the council chambers to speak. So, just to give you a little bit of that background. Here with the mayor is myself, the clerk, myself, Randy Idy, our engineer, Charlie Jones, our chief of police, our attorney, city attorney Ben, and city administrator Lowell Prangie. And then the public attending here. So, if you're here virtually, as in the public, when the mayor does open up the... Excuse me. When the mayor does open up public comments, if you could raise your hand. If you hover down, if you're on a computer, hover down below your name. You should see an opportunity for you to raise your hand electronically, and we will call on you. If you're on a cellphone, it should be star nine, star nine, to raise your hand and lower your hand. And then we ask on the panelists, if you could just please mute yourself, the council chambers, council members, if you can mute yourself while we're talking. We will, it would be much appreciated. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, cheers.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Idy. With that, then, we will bring up roll call. Kelly?
Luther?
Here.
Traxler?
Here.
Sutherland?
Here.
Sweeney?
Here.
Schwabs?
Here.
Merrill?
Here.
Solberg?
Here.
Schlue?
Here.
Erdman?
Here.
Sommerfeld?
Here.
Okay, thank you. We don't have any special recognitions this evening, so that we will move right into our approval of minutes. Want to prove the minutes of our last meeting. We don't need to do that. We'll do that on Monday night. So, that being the case, we don't have any public hearings, public comments. We have public comments tonight on the agenda items for the evening. With that being said, you're welcome to speak for three minutes each. But we do have a 15-minute cap until we were to possibly bring it back to council for an additional 15 minutes. If there's a lot of people that have the same statements, you know, you can... The speaker can speak their part, and, you know, you can, in agreeance, you know, you can do the hand raised to save time. We understand this is a contentious situation, but we need to bring it in front of the public so that we can at least say we brought it out in public for the public comments. And this is a public comment portion of our meeting. So, at that point, we also have individuals online that will be participating in the public comments. So, I think what we will do tonight is offer each other. So, we'll offer a public comments online, and then we'll offer our audience in the gathering here tonight a chance, and then we'll go back to the public comments again. We don't take any questions and/or dialogue between individuals and ourselves and/or the city council until public comments is over. And then we may have questions that we may call you back up to comment. And if you give us a comment, please give us your name and your address, and that we can... So, if we need to call somebody back up, we have that information. So, again, there won't be any ability to speak other than if you're speaking in public comments, and we would ask you that you would come up to this microphone. And again, if you're out online, that you would, we would start there. So, we would go every other for the next 15 minutes, and then if we need to have an extension, we can do so. So, at this point, Mr. Idy, I would have you take control of that aspect. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, online, I see Jasmine. Jasmine, I'm going to open up your mic. Jasmine, the floor is yours. Could you give your name and address, please?
Hello, Jas... Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Jasmine Rothbauer, 1101 Hudson, Wisconsin.
Go ahead, Jasmine.
I am not sure if I'm in the right meeting, but I did hear that there was going to be an airport commission meeting today at 7:00 PM, held at the first floor of the council chambers at City Hall regarding the Menominee Municipal Airport Program.
Yeah, thanks, Jasmine. That's, uh, that is at 7:00 PM, so that's following this one.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I had the right link.
But, okay, but that is not going to be... We're not going to zoom that in. You'd have to come in person.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us up to our next contestant. I'm going to keep it with Mr. Idy. Go ahead, Mr. Idy.
So, online, again, if you're in the public, you want to speak, if you could just make your way to the podium, and then we'll call on you at the first one at the podium. There we'll... But then, online, while we're waiting for that at the podium, I see Alexandra Hall. Alexandra Hall, we've opened your mic. If you could give your name and address, please?
Hi, I'm Dr. Alexandra Hall. I live at 1108 Elm Avenue West here in Menominee. And so, I want to say, I'm a physician and a biology teacher here at Stout, so I have a really interesting perspective on the situation, which is that, right now, we have rampant spread of COVID-19 among our students, particularly those who live off-campus. I work at the clinic. Our tests there, our positivity rate is between 30 and 50% when we're testing symptomatic students and those who are closed contacts. That's incredibly high and very concerning, that there are a ton of infections out there that we're not catching. So, the thing that's really, really important at this point in time, because the students are the students, but we really need to try to prevent this virus from spilling over into the community any more than necessary or any more than it already has. Our students work in grocery stores, restaurants, bars, retail shops, daycares, and nursing homes. If we want to keep in-person school and keep people able to go to their jobs and not having to quarantine for two weeks, we need to prevent that spill over. That means we need to do everything we can to halt the spread of this virus. Masks work. I don't like wearing them. I hate them. But I can tell you unequivocally that they are protective against the virus. No, they are not 100%. But neither is birth control, and that doesn't mean that you don't use it. They really make a difference. Every single one of the students I've diagnosed this past week with COVID-19, and there have been many, caught it from unmasked contact with an infected individual who was in their pre-symptomatic stage, which means they didn't have symptoms yet, so they didn't know they were infected. So, it's so important that we wear masks all the time. Some say it's their right to not wear a mask, but I say it is not their right, however, to put another person at risk of physical harm by not wearing one and potentially infecting them. Masks work, but they don't work when you don't wear them, like when you're eating or drinking. This virus can stay in the air for up to three hours and circulate around a room, infecting people who are more than six feet away. It's even riskier if people are close together or the room is small and crowded. Some people say this virus isn't a big deal. They point to our low hospitalization rate in our county and zero deaths so far. My response to that is just wait. We've been super lucky so far, and we'll be lucky as long as this virus stays mostly confined to young, healthy adults. But if it gets into the general population, we're likely to see a great deal of suffering overwhelming of our medical facilities and many deaths. And this would be suffering and deaths that could have been avoided if we had acted. I don't like this situation. I hate it for everyone. It's awful. But if we want to prevent the deaths of our neighbors, the collapse of our in-person schooling, and an even bigger blow to our local economy, we need to absolutely require masks from everyone when in public and not allow exceptions for indoor drinking and eating. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And, no, it was not a recording. Listen, we really need to be order here, guys and gals. This, we are, we need to. We have a timer, and he will keep time. Can you... Listen, okay, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to let our speaker in the audience. Go ahead, please, give us your name and address.
I'm also the owner of Menominee. So, Mr. Mayor, this is another tactic you are using to undermine your pockets. I believe you should step down from being an influence or having a vote in the decision to the prospect of interest. After speaking with you in March, we informed you I cannot conduct any business on my source property, even if I converted my source product to 51% PPE. You told me no, but then you asked where I was going to get these masks to accomplish this task, and I informed you the local business that I was going to work with. You turned around later that day and called them and inquired about placing an order for approximately $50,000 masks to screen print to line your pockets for your business. Never once did you offer these masks to any of the citizens of this town. Your agenda here is not to protect the citizens, it's to keep money rolling in your business. Many of us small business owners are on the brink of closing our doors already. There are some who, unfortunately, have not survived this long. If the council decided to mandate these masks, will the council also offer financial relief to the businesses negatively affected by this? So far, the council has done nothing to help us, only further hinder, hinder us.
We pay our rent and our mortgage every month, not you. So, why should you be able to dictate who can be in our business and what they must wear? You are only driving customers out of town if you continue to do these... If you continue to put these ridiculous measures in force. So, today, I ask you all, do you want to carry the burden of destroying local business by pressing forward with these proposed ordinances? Or, Mr. Mayor, do you have the right to profit using your influence and your elected position? Listen to the majority. Let us make our own personal decisions. Our community depends on it, and our businesses depend on it.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Amanda. And we're going to go to the, Mr. Idy?
I see Aiden Rainey. Aiden Rainey, we will open your mic. If you could please give your name and address?
Hi, I'm Aiden Rainey. My address is 607 13th Avenue. So, I'd like to talk about the consequences of opening businesses without the mask ordinance and keeping them open. I think it's really risky. We can look to Eau Claire for ordinance, actually. The Pickle is a large bar in Eau Claire where mask ordinances weren't enforced, and actually, the bar went over the occupancy limit. Over 69 people have been infected. Just that was the most recent report that have confirmed cases, and it's likely that somebody could die from a simple mistake and a decision to not open an ordinance. And I have to ask the Menominee community, as a student who's extremely at risk, who lives with other students who don't want to follow these mask ordinances, is my life, is anybody's life worth taking over the temporary decision to acquire a mask? Is my life less important than your money? That's it.
Okay, thank you, Alden. Thank you, thank you, Alden. Now, we're going to take somebody from the audience, and give us your name and address, please.
I ask that you don't start my time until I give that information. My name is Jen Flanders.
Jen?
I live in Wilson, or outside of Wilson. So, I do not live in the, in the city limits, but I'm here as a concerned citizen because I do frequent Menominee to do business and to go to church sometimes, to go to the doctor, whatever. So, I'm here for that reason, and I'd like to start by showing you your own website, okay? This is 289 cases of COVID in Dunn County in the last six months, okay? That is cumulative cases. That is not current cases. And in fact, if you look down here at this little tiny green line here, this is your current cases, less than 20, okay? So, um... Sorry, I forgot to turn my page. So, there are also zero deaths in Dunn County, and that means that in Dunn County, there is a 100% survival rate. Out of 7,813 total cases, 96% are negative. The young lady that spoke at first talked about contact cases. That means probable cases. Probable cases are not positive cases that have been confirmed. So, that statistic is null and void. Okay? Americans, or the CDC, has said that there are 1 billion infections worldwide. Over 20% of Americans are infected per year with the flu, okay? 25 to 50 million documented cases, 225,000 hospitalizations, and tens of thousands have died every year due to the flu. Why have we not masked and kept hostage our citizens before this? The Wisconsin DHS, as of April 4th, said the seasonal flu and pneumonia counted for 5.6% of all Wisconsin deaths. Why wasn't that an epidemic? The Respiratory Surveillance, uh, Virus Surveillance Report said COVID was at the very bottom, barely above parinfluenza, 60 tests for COVID at that time, and over 3,900 for the flu. The Swiss Policy Research found the data is faulty. As many as, um, as many patients are counted two, three, and four times with this COVID this year and are tested more than once. Worldwide, the overall mortality rate is 0.1% to 0.4%. 80% of the cases are asymptomatic. And that number, um... I forgot what I was going to say about that. It's probably coming up. So, why, I would like to know why, instead of making sure that you keep people hostage and masked and in, under submission, why aren't we talking about treatments that are working? Treatments like hydroclo... I can't talk. Hydrocloxicorequ... Blah, blah. Convalescent plasma, which was approved in the 1800s by the FDA against diphtheria. Strengthening your immune system and common sense, vitamin C and zinc, a healthy diet, sleep, regular exercise, sun, managing stress, fellowship gathering with family and friends. It's time to take back our lives. Dr. Richard Bartlett of Midland, Texas, has had great success with budesonine, also known as palmacort, via a nebulizer. It's an inhaled steroid, which I've used many times with my own children because it does not increase the chances of secondary pneumonia. It's safe for two-pound preemie all the way up to the elderly, along with zinc, chlorithromycin, which is an antibiotic for pneumonia and walking pneumonia, and the cost to the patient would be approximately $3 per day. A hospital in the south of San Antonio, Texas, used that combination and emptied their ICU in 48 hours, not just moved them to a different room, but moved them home.
Hey, excuse me. Could you give me a copy of those? Because I think those are great stats.
I will email them to you.
I would really appreciate that.
I sure would.
And your three minutes have ended a few seconds ago, but I think you've got...
I also, I also have a list of what holding people hostage under these conditions when there's no emergency, um, under the U.S. Constitution and different sections of Section 18 and such are, that I'll email you also.
Oh, very good. Thank you. Thank you, and for that information, Jen, appreciate it very much. And then, Mr. Idy?
So, I don't see anybody online. If you're online and wish to speak, you need to raise your hand electronically. Again, hovering down under participate, under your name, you should have an option to raise your hand. If you're on a phone, it should be star nine. Star nine should. Get your hand up virtually, and then we'll recognize you. Yep, if they raise your hand, it'll come to the top. We'll see.
Very good. Well, I think we can take somebody else from the audience, then. If you'd like to step up the microphone and give us your name and address, please?
I'm Mason, 2422 Frickland Drive. Um, Mayor Knack, you and I spoke earlier today outside down by the pavilion.
Need your last name?
Brown.
Brown, okay.
Mayor, you and I spoke this morning down by the Farmer's Market Pavilion. Not this morning, more like around 12:30. And, um, I just wanted to let people know what you told me. We were having, you were having, it got a little bit heated. You seemed to get a little upset. Discussion about the mask mandate. I was telling you that it was unconstitutional, and you told me, you said, you know what? It probably is unconstitutional, but yeah, you did. I'll throw it on a Bible. You said that to me. The WEIU 18 news lady was standing right there. There are plenty of other people that were sitting in the park that heard it as well. It's, I'm, I'm coming here to say it as a fact that I spoke to you, and you said that the mask mandate is probably unconstitutional.
Okay, that brings us back to Mr. Idy. Do you have anybody online?
No, I see no hands raised. And even for the panelists, if you wish to speak, if you could raise your hand. We have a couple panelists, non-council members. If they want to raise their hand, they sure as can too, but I see nobody in the attendees' list at this time.
Okay, so we could bring it back to the audience?
Seeing one here, hang on.
Okay, hold up.
No, we got two.
Okay.
So... Let me my glasses. So, the phone number ending in 3536, phone number ending in 3536. Your mic is open, and you can unmute. If you hit star six, you should be able to unmute. Last four is 35. There you go. Uh, name and address.
Oh, there you go.
Name and address, please.
Yes, Paul Wilks, 2515 Damon Street, Eau Claire, Wisconsin, 54701. Um, I just wanted to say, I'm the owner of Diablo Blue in town. I sent an email letter out to the council today just to kind of put some of my thoughts on paper. I just want to say for the record, I appreciate, I know everyone's in a tough spot. Um, I, I love this open forum, and, you know, we're here to make sure everybody stays safe at Diablo and keep our business going. I just wanted to mention about the letter I emailed to all the council members. If you didn't get that, I can resend that as well, but thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Paul. And now, we can bring it back to the audience. So, go ahead and give us your name and address, please.
It's Patty Myra, 316 21st Avenue, West Menominee.
Okay, go ahead and buy Patty.
Um, I just want to say, first of all, I work in a nursing home. I see the effects of mask-wearing, of isolation, of no contact. Our residents are losing hope. Our staff are losing hope, and that's exactly what I see in the community. I used to be able to go to Walmart, talk to people. People were friendly. People, you know, if you're having a bad day, that smile, that facial expressions is what makes us humanity. Doing this and wearing masks for a short time, a couple of weeks, which was what it was supposed to be, is one thing, but we are how many months out? I talked to somebody today who's afraid to leave their house because they're so, they're emotionally drained. I don't go to the store as often. I'm not spending money in the local community anymore because I don't want to fight with not having to wear a mask. I need that people contact. I'm emotionally drained. I know I'm not the only one. This is a bigger picture than stopping something that we can't stop. I'm sorry if people have lost people, but people die of dementia. They die of cancer. They die of how many zillion bacteria and viral infections. We can't stop living. We can't stop this humanity. People are no longer human. I don't hear the laughter. I don't see the smiles. I'm losing who we are. I know people who are just, they're done. They can't deal with society, and it's getting harder for me to keep going. It's harder for me to keep going to work and having to deal with residents who can't contact their families, who can't see each other. Then I got to go to the store and see everybody in masks and see no humanity, no emotions, no nothing. Enough is enough. We need to move on as a society and think of bigger picture and stop looking at the stupid numbers. People die. I'm sorry. I wish people didn't, but they do. And that's something we got to start and realize. We aren't going to prevent death. It's going to happen, and this mask thing keep lingering is just going to cause emotional stress. I like to know what the numbers of psychotic use is now. I like to know the suicide number rate. I like to know the number of people who are crawling the crisis line. I'm this close to having to go to the doctor and get something myself because I can't deal with society and life anymore. And I'm sure I'm not the only one who is fed up with this. I need people contact because I'm a human. I'm a person, and that is more important than trying to save every single person in the world because we're not. It's not realistic. But saving each other's mental health, that is realistic, and we need to do more for promotion of healthy habits, of prevention, of the hand washing, of healthy eating, as somebody else mentioned. That's the direction we need to move in. We need to stop this and move on for the mentality of people. Because kids are no longer happy. Kids aren't smiling. Kids aren't laughing. I miss that at the store, which is another reason I don't go to the store anymore because I can't stand the sadness and despair that's going on. It's time to move on and keep going because that's what we got to do as a society and as human beings.
Patty, is that Patty? Thank you, Patty, and I concur with you on a lot of those issues. I appreciate that very much. Your statements is, is well-heeded. Then that brings us back to online, Mr. Idy.
Nobody online?
Okay, that, uh, we have to, um, we have to extend the public comments period of this. So, I'm going to ask the council if they'd like to make a motion to extend the public comments for another 15 minutes. Does anybody like to make a motion? Nate, you've got your hand up?
Yep, I would like to make a motion to expend, expand, extend. There we go. Extend the public comments by another 15 minutes.
Okay, a motion been made. Is there a second to that motion? Mary?
I would second Nate's motion.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, go ahead, please.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Diana Fragola. I live in Spring Valley, Wisconsin, but I am here at 1506 Ninth Street, and I own the Mainstream Boutique here in Menominee. And I'm speaking on behalf of other business owners and also just myself as a human being. Um, I would love to give this young lady a huge hug because she said so much of what I hear every day. There really is something said about retail therapy. I know people come into my store to go ahead and buy clothing, but at that same token, they're sharing a lot about their lives. They're sharing a lot about what they're going through right now. They're sharing those emotional struggles. Um, in the process of this, I was not an essential business, so I was shut down. I, unfortunately, as a business owner, did not get unemployment. So, I went to be employed at Dick's Fresh Market and work in the deli for less than what I pay my own employees. But I needed to go ahead and continue to somehow keep my business alive because, like the other young lady mentioned, we have rent. We have a lot of things. Amanda has a lot of expenses. I have those same expenses. So, how, what are we going to do? How are we going to survive? I went to Facebook. I depended on social media. We didn't have that opportunity 10 years ago, and I was thankful that we had it now. I went ahead and started doing live videos. I went ahead and promoted other businesses here in town. The fact that our Chamber of Commerce came forward and put together some amazing things as far as who's doing takeout, who's doing delivery, those kinds of things to help keep some of our restaurants and businesses alive was incredible. But for those of us who are nonessential, we had to find other ways to survive. In that process, with me doing a lot of the videos, I have a lot of lovely ladies who come into my store. They've messaged me. We did curbside pickup. I've mailed a lot of things, and now that they can actually physically come in store, they were so excited to come in. We give distance hugs. We give elbow bumps. We do whatever we can. And you know what? There's some of us who've just broken down and given each other a true hug because that's what we needed to do. I did not give my own personal mother a hug for six weeks, and that was really, really hard. She's 81 and has Parkinson's, and I wanted to make sure she was okay. So, it's not that this isn't a virus, and it's not that it's not real and it kills people. We know that it does. But at that same token, when we had the opportunity to reopen in May, it was a huge blessing because I was able to meet with my community. These ladies are my tribe. We help each other. We support each other. We empower each other. We love each other, and that's what's so important. It's more than just clothing, you guys. Clothing is something you wear, but the community coming together is what is so important. And that's what I've heard from these ladies. So, I stand here on their behalf to say, you know what? We understand there's a virus, but by having the mask mandate go into effect on August 1st, instantly, my business that I was working so hard for those three months to rebuild got dropped in half immediately. So, I worked to try to rebuild to immediately get it taken out underneath, underneath me. And I know there's a lot of other nonessential businesses who felt the same way. Um, once again, I have, I have to honor you guys and commend you for the fact that we said the Pledge of Allegiance. I can't tell you the last time that we had the opportunity to do that in public here in America. I think we need to because you know one, and God we trust.
Thank you. Thank you, Diana. I appreciate that. And, Mr. Idy?
Uh, nobody online. I see, oh, I see Sandy Scott. Uh, Sandy, your mic is open. If you're on mute, if you give your name and address, and the mic's yours.
Yep, thank you. Hi, this is Sandy Scott, and I'm the dean of students at UW Stout, and I live at 3965 Hi, this is Sandy Scott, and I'm the Dean of Students at UW Stoudt, and I live at 3965 Nicholas Drive. And I actually became a resident of Menominee two and a half years ago. And I really, I have to say, I appreciate very much the concerns of the businesses that are present as a sibling to several small business owners in my family. I understand how important that business is. I actually believe we want the same thing. We want those businesses open because we want our students to be able to have the, as much of this full college experience as they, they possibly can. And that's been really challenging in a time of COVID, as you know. As someone who works with students every single day, I see the sacrifices they are making to be here because they want to be here in person. And the individual who spoke near the beginning to talk about their compromised health conditions, that's what I worry about. I've met already since school has just started with a student who's lost both grandparents to COVID and is scared to death to be here, but wants to be here so badly and feels like they can be here because of the precautions that Stoudt has put in place to help our students be as safe as they can possibly be. Today, our Chief of Police and one of our staff members went to an off-campus residence to chat with the eight occupants of that house because it had been brought to our attention that perhaps some of the behaviors they were engaging in were potentially health concerns. They had a great conversation for 15 minutes with those students about the responsibility all of us have to try to stay here and to keep this community as open as possible. I really believe we all want the same thing. But I also believe with my whole heart that the way that we have to do that is in the safest way we know possible. And when Dr. Hall spoke about masks, I think we know that it helps. Is it the end-all and be-all? No, but we know it makes a difference, and we're seeing that in our Residence Hall student numbers, which are coming back at least as we've just started testing, pretty good. We're able to control that on campus in ways we can't off-campus. And if this city council can pass this ordinance to help everybody and to give us some teeth when we are working with our off-campus students so that they can make those right choices, I really believe we can all get to the same goal that we want. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. And that brings us back to our audience. So give us your name and address, please.
Okay, my name is Jen Sockry, and I live at E 2701 670th Avenue, Menominee. I'm coming, what brought me here tonight is that a concerned parent. I have five children, but one of my children has special needs. He has Down Syndrome. He's very bright. He's 22. He holds a job here in Menominee at the Raw Deal. They love him, and he loves being there. He's been employed there for almost three years now, and I've watched him grow and communicate and make eye contact and talk with people. And people love him, and they would, he would come home with, I would get compliments on how well he's talking to people. Since this whole ordeal came up, the, the virus was fine. We can deal with that. And then came the whole mask situation, just like Patty said. So many different things. One, he doesn't want to wear one. He can't handle it on his skin. It bothers him. It, it makes him feel nervous and anxious. Okay, as a parent, try to tell that to your child with special needs. It's very, very difficult. Okay, that's one problem. Now we've, we've, we went inside. We don't want to talk because we have not, we don't go to our connections anymore, which we used to go to two days a week, Tuesdays and Fridays. He was at, or Tuesdays and Thursdays, he was at the Connections in Ark, and they would go all over the community, and he was making friends. And just like that, gone. It's done. We, we don't have it anymore. Now we're, now we're at home, sitting, and there's only so much a parent can do. You, you can't entertain somebody all day long. I try, and I've tried since March. The job did come back. We are allowed to go back to work. It's very, very difficult because it's only two days that he is there. That's only two days that he has contact with people. He needs to have contact with people, just like I do. I sit out in my truck at Walmart or Lammers, or excuse me, Dick's Fresh Market, and I get nervous and worried. I don't want to go in there because I'm going to get shamed for not wearing a mask because I don't think, I'm sorry. I, I know you have numbers and percentages, but my heart tells me that those aren't always the correct numbers, and we all know that. And that's where I second guess it. And then, you know what? My son had to postpone his wedding this summer. We had a 300 people venue. We canceled it. My mom and dad, her 89 years old, they don't even want to come. It's their last grandchild's wedding. Done. I don't even know if my dad's going to be here next year. He don't live in Menominee. Nevertheless, it's still a problem, and it's over what? It's like, it's, yes, it will kill people, but it's not killing, people die in car accidents and heart attacks and H1N1. That killed so many more people than this. So I'm not trying to get loud or anything. I'm just talking from my heart and watching my disabled child who can't, we can't get him to make eye contact. And it's all started when this stuff came about. And now I gotta try to find a way to get him to talk again and, and be part of society. And it's hard, and I really feel that this is not making it any better. So that's just, I'm just talking as a parent, so thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Thank you, Jen. You know what? Billy, there's a chair there. Why don't you grab that? Okay. Okay, very good. Mr. Eddie?
I see Julie Bates Maves. Julie, your mic is open. If you could give your name and address, please.
Sure. My name is Julie Bates Maves. I live at E 4589 460 First Ave, Menominee. I have a kindergartner in the schools. He goes to River Heights. I am absolutely in favor of COVID ordinances, and I believe in science, and I believe in the numbers, and I understand the heartache that this whole situation is bringing for all of us, and it sucks. But I still don't want to see Menominee go down the path of other cities like us and other towns like us. And I don't want my five-year-old to get booted from school because people make bad decisions, and then we all pay the price for it. I need him to be in kindergarten for the same reasons the previous mother just stated for her kid. We need people. We need contact. And if masks help us to sustain those connections in person, I want that. I don't want virtual school. I have a job. I need to be at that job in order to do it well. And I don't want to have to be home trying to do e-learning with my kid because the virus is running rampant in our school system, and we don't have that right now, and we're so fortunate. And I'm just really hoping, really hoping that database decisions can be made. And I fully realize that data is not always confidence inspiring for a lot of people because it's a number. But so far, we've been doing okay. And I work at Stoudt. I love my job, but seeing the numbers go up since we've been back scares the hell out of me as a person in this community, let alone a parent in this community. And if there is something we can do that science has proven to help, why wouldn't we do it? So thank you very much. I appreciate your time and the discussion. Thank you.
Okay, Julie, thank you. That brings us back to the audience. If somebody would like to speak, we've got about six minutes left or so, a couple of speakers. So Billy Joe, or Billy?
Thank you for offering me a chair. Billy Waleen, Tenter Lake. I want to thank the people who didn't kick me out when I choked. That was nice. Anyhow, I'm here as a past restaurateur. We used to have the bolo. I know how hard this restaurant business is. Believe me, we know how hard it is, and it breaks my heart to see what's happening to these young businesses. If we lose these restaurateurs who are trying so hard, like Peter with the Buck and Jake's and, and Log Jam and the one on the lake waterfront, they're, we'll have a ghost town. Who's going to come? Who wants to come downtown to nothing? So I think your job is to figure out how to keep, help those young businesses because if they go, who's going to want to get in their shoes? If they can't make it, who can make it? So my other point is, I have extreme claustrophobia, which I told Randy today. I designed my house, and everything I do is based on a real big problem, so you won't see me in a mask. But the masks, there's two things against them. For one thing, if a child is part of the human trafficking problem that we have in America, you can't identify them with a mask. That's terrible. That's terrible. And the other thing is, when you wear a mask, you don't know who the bad guys are. You can't tell. I vote for no masks.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Billy. And Mr. Eddie, do you have anybody online?
Yes, we have a couple. We have four standing in line. Barra Kristen. Barra Kristen, your mic is open. If you give your name and address, and the mic is yours.
Yes, sir. Kristen Barra. I'm on 909 Main Street East. I would like to point out, I think it's really important when you're looking at things like this, that we learn from the people around us in the other counties. And we have places like La Crosse, Oshkosh, Nino, Wisconsin, making national news in small towns for how many cases that they've had. And it's like repeating the same thing just because we're over it. Like, it just seems like foolish to me. It's like they've proven to work. It's proven to slow the spread in other areas. And it's also, there's also been like other communities before us that show that we're all working towards the same thing. I, I believe not having the masks is working against the common goal because communities before us, I'm originally from Illinois. My parents live in a small town, and they've had to take steps back in their reopening process because of people negating the mask mandate. And it's like, that's not helping small businesses either. It's like we all have the same goal. It's like, and all of these, all of these things hold true of, it's devastating. Yeah, the lack of, the lack of socialization. Things are different for sure, but ignoring it and just saying that we're washing our hands of this virus that's running rampant in Wisconsin right now with like seven of the top 20 counties in the U.S. Is, doesn't mean that we can just ignore it. It's going to keep happening. It's going to keep killing you. And if you're so passionate about protecting those around you and keeping everything open, I think we need to work together to do everything that we can from us having to take a step back. Wearing a mask isn't saying that you can't go shop. There's nothing about wearing a mask that you cannot go shop. I think we really need to think about this with the data and the people before us that have made decisions and the success that mask wearing has reduced in other college campuses.
Okay, thank you, Kristen. Appreciate that. And back to our audience. So go ahead, please.
My name is Kyle Uds. Currently do not live here. I'm looking at moving here. My wife works here. Worked here for many years, went to Stoudt. My kids live here. And so as somebody who's potentially moving.
Could you give us our address too, Kyle?
I don't have one here. What's your address, Keenan? 1423 15th Street is where one of my kids lives.
Thank you. Thank you.
Again, go ahead. I want to talk about the word reasonable, which is what 252 kind of hinges on, gives the Health Department this kind of leeway. It's not reasonable for the numbers that are being said to include healthy people, which are asymptomatic people. 94 to 99.5% of the people who test positive for COVID, actually coronavirus, are healthy people. We've never before in history ever counted healthy people. We have over a million viruses on us each and every day. We don't count ourselves as cases. That needs to stop. We need to have clear, transparent numbers to, to base your numbers and the reason for a mask off of that is ridiculous. The test itself, it doesn't test for the SARS-CoV-2 virus specifically. It tests for the coronavirus family. The regular flu is coming up as a positive. You've got to throw these numbers out. The masked, CDC just said that the wildfires, the particulates in the air, and 95 masks, they're no good for that. The COVID virus is smaller than that. What makes you think a mask works? It doesn't. Thank you. The other part I want to talk about is people like my friend Ben, who served in the military, did not fight, did not serve to protect our freedoms from people going and telling businesses how many people they can have in their business. That's not right. It's not constitutional. It's a very big overreach. That needs to be dropped. I cannot justify moving my family into this community or keeping my family in this community, paying the taxes when you have politicians that don't listen to the people. So I ask, I ask with all due respect, you listen to the people and you listen and search out the truth, not the political numbers. Thank you.
A lot of good points. Thank you, Kyle. We're going to bring it back to Mr. Eddie.
Yeah, and KT, we see your hand up. If you wish to open your mic up, the floor is yours. A name and address, KT.
Hello, everybody. My name is KT Gallagher. I am the Dunn County Health Department Director.
Can you speak louder, please?
Sure. My name is KT Gallagher, and I am the Dunn County Health Department Director. I currently live in Eau Claire, but I have been the Dunn County Health Department Director for now two years. So thank you, guys, for having this conversation, bringing the public in to listen to their concerns on all sides. This is something that people feel very strongly about. I want to give some, again, data so that we can make some data-informed decisions moving forward. The cases that we have in Dunn County are rapidly increasing, as you heard from Dr. Hall. As they are testing students on campus that are symptomatic, she's seen an incredible positivity rate, meaning we're not testing enough and we have more cases out there. I want to share with our testing, we test via PCR, looking for the genetic material specifically of COVID-19. There is no cross-reactivity with other common colds, influenza's, or other types of germs. We are seeing an incredible increase in cases. Today, we had 21 positives. Yesterday, we had 33 positives. We are seeing that our active cases are increasing daily. We need to get our arms wrapped around this. We need to do the things that have data behind them that work. Masks work. They have been shown effective with coronaviruses and large droplet transmission germs. We have seen businesses not have transmission because of good adherence to mask-wearing. We saw that in a hairstyling location in Missouri. I would argue that we've seen that here. We see people that spread their germ before they know they're sick, pre-symptomatic. Masks work. We know that other things work, like keeping physical distance, six feet, so that you keep your germs to yourself. Good hand hygiene. Importantly, staying home when you're sick. We have had people that have been tested in Dunn County that did not stay home. They were sick enough to go get tested. They went to work. They went to practice. They went to school. Leaving things up to an individual's right for themselves to make a decision for others about the health and safety of what they do is, is concerning when people make poor choices like that. Those are Dunn County cases. Those are real-life people that our contact tracers and public health nurses have talked to. So thank you, guys, for having this conversation. Thank you for listening to the data and making data-informed decisions.
Time is up. Thank you, KT. Appreciate that. We have time enough for one more person from the audience. So. Just come on up. We'll, we'll, we'll figure it out. Okay. A name and address, please?
My name is Ryan Martin, N 6835 50th Street here in Menominee. And I thank you, Katie, for the perfect segue of, of data. And with all of the data that we've heard today, I'm actually at a loss as to why we continue to use the cumulative COVID cases as the end-all, be-all statistic in decision-making when, according to the Wisconsin DHS, the percentage of positive cases that lead to hospitalizations and fatalities continue to go down week after week. This has been the trend since back in July, despite a statewide mask mandate. We have historically never used statistics in this way prior to now by counting total cumulative events to determine severity. I like word pictures. So first, for an example, if a commercial flight were to crash tomorrow, would we expect all flights across the country to be grounded regardless of plane type, model size, weather conditions, et cetera, until a remedy as to why this one plane crashed was put into place? The answer is no, because we have data to show us that statistically, thousands of planes move throughout the system each day with little to no issues. Maybe some minor delays and mechanical failures, but not a catastrophic failure. We are starting to see the same trend of data related to COVID-19. Hundreds of thousands of people have now tested positive for COVID-19, and comparatively, there have been very few fatalities and hospitalizations. Now, with all that being said, there are still those that feel flying is too dangerous, so they drive, take the train, or the bus. They avoid the risk, but as an informed decision. For those that do suffer from a tragic plane crash, it doesn't take away from the unfortunate event or to minimize it in any way, but we don't somehow turn those who choose to fly into villains. My apologies for the lengthy word picture, but I have a hard time understanding as to why during this moment, when we choose to use statistics in this way, when a world full of risk, we've never done it this way before. As much as we'd like to. As much as we'd like to, it's hard for me and so many others in our community to believe it's good intentioned at this point. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Ryan. Should we extend one? Should we do one more extension? I'm going to ask the council then for another extension. If anybody'd like to make a motion to extend one more period, we'll do one more 15 minute set. So with that, I'll bring it back to the council, council. Okay, Nate, you got your hand up?
Yeah, I would love to make another motion to extend the public comments.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, a second to the motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, we're going to run another 15 minutes so we get more, more feedback. So with that, Mr. Eddy?
I see a Lenny Marshall online. Lenny Marshall, we've opened up your mic. The podium's yours.
Thank you.
Name and address, please.
Lenny Marshall, 2440 Third Street East, Menominee, Wisconsin.
Thank you.
I would encourage people to think beyond just the United States when thinking about what decisions make sense and taking a look at how. Things have worked in practice. Other countries that have been more focused on helping people use masks everywhere. Have been able to reopen more easily and I would encourage us to have that happen here in Wisconsin, in Menominee. Because I would really like to see the businesses opened. I'm calling from home because I'm not leaving home. I have a health condition that makes it so that I'm more susceptible. And I would really, really love to get back out there and be in the community and at restaurants and at stores. And that can only happen when there is not so much risk out there. I'm remembering when seatbelts became public law, people protested that it was taking away their liberties. And then we realized what kind of benefit there was for public health, what kind of benefit there was for the taxpayers. In not having to deal with people who had been in accidents where they had injuries that were preventable. And we accepted that we need to wear seatbelts when we're in our cars. If the city council is, is concerned about people's mental health. Because of the isolation, I would encourage them to support greater mental health options in the community rather than supporting a negative. Public health viral exposure. Because that is part of what causes mental health concerns. So please support people both in their physical and their mental health. And help us all get back to being part of a larger community again. Thank you.
Thank you, Lenny. Participant, please come on up.
Hi, I'm Dr. Chad Barfnecht, 700 Wolfski Bay Road, Suite 150 here in Menominee. As a chiropractor here in town, we look at data all the time. It's kind of a, I'll, I'll admit, I'm a nerd. So I hear tonight, a lot of stuff talked about the science is there, the science is there, the science is there for the mass stuff. And to be honest with you, I look for it and the science isn't there. Obviously you can say if a healthy person or a person. A person that's symptomatic, coughing, sneezing, doing all that stuff, wearing a mask, theoretically, yes, it's going to stop the wet particles. I get that. That's common sense. But traditionally, if you're sick, you're supposed to stay home too. So I think if we treat everybody like adults, tell them, hey, if you're sick, stay home. I think most people will do that. Second thing is, there is some science out there. The New England Journal of Medicine in 2020 says scientists that are at a consensus that the diameter of a, of the COVID-19 particles were point zero six to point one four microns in size. Most N95 and N99 masks can filter out only to point three zero. So another American Journal of Infection Control from 2006. The N95 filtering mask piece respirators may not provide the expected protection against small vikrons. As anticipated, the tests, they tested surgical masks showed a much higher particle penetration because. They are known to be less efficient than the N95s. Some surgical masks may let a significant fraction of airborne viruses penetrate through their filters. That's surgical masks. Here's the British Medical Journal in 2015 on cloth masks. Cloth masks also had a significantly higher rates of influenza-like illness. Penetration of viral particles through a cloth mask was almost 97%. So when you talk about asymptomatic people that could potentially spread the virus. I get it. That's a reality. The chances of an asymptomatic person spreading the virus is still very, very low. Given the contact period that they have with certain people. Obviously, there are certain establishments in town. That people are a lot closer in contact for longer periods of time. I think as a business owner, you have to take that risk. Informed choice is the choice that all physicians, county health directors, anybody in that matter should be giving people informed choice. I have never heard any data from the health world, World Health Organization, CDC, American Journal of Medicine. Any of them come out with any formal data on peer reviewed science on mass preventing illness. In asymptomatic people wearing them all the time. So with that, as a business owner also. I think in this world where everybody's divisive, anytime you make a stance on something, you're going to divide people. I think as business owners, we're all adults. We should be able to make a decision on what we want to do in our businesses. And go from there. People that want to do it, let them do it. People that don't, don't. And let the people decide what they want to do. Thank you for having this tonight. I appreciate you letting me speak.
And, and thank you, Dr. Chad. We appreciate you being here. You know, it's good to have those numbers in front of us. I mean, that's what we're here tonight to do is to talk about this thing. So you being here with those statistics are, are very helpful. Thank you. Mr. Eddy?
From the panel aside, Catherine Frank, Chancellor Frank. Name and address, please, ma'am.
Thank you. Catherine Frank, Chancellor at the University of Wisconsin-Stout. I live just outside of the city limits. First of all, just it's, I want to thank everybody for their honesty and their, their passion over this subject. One of the things that attracted me to Stout and to Menominee. Was the care that I saw throughout the community, for, for the community and for the university. It's one of the things that, that influenced my decision and my husband's decision. To move here and lead an institution that has been a, that has been part of this community for over 130 years. What we want to do is to continue to be part of this community for the next 130 years. We want Menominee to continue to be a place where our students and others come together. And celebrate what this community has to offer. That's why as an institution, we spent the summer, hundreds of us spent the summer. Putting together plans to ensure that we were able to open the university safely. That we were able to stay in face-to-face operations. And to keep our, keep our students in the community, contributing to the community, contributing to local businesses. To reiterate what KT Gallagher said, masks work and our data shows that masks work. We are testing students on campus, our residence hall students. As was reported, the rate of return on those tests for asymptomatic students is extremely low. At about 5%. Our students being tested in the community, the rate of return on those tests are high, between 30 and 50%. Masks work as shown by our campus guidelines and expectations to wear masks unless you are in a closed office space. Or in a residence hall room. Again, our efforts as a university were designed to protect not only our university. But the community that surrounds us, the community that supports us, the community that we're a part of. And our effort here is to keep, again, keep our students here, keep our community healthy. And continue to help our, our economy be as vibrant as possible. If we see a bright spot in this, in this pandemic, for me as a new member of this community. It's not how divisive this pandemic has been. It's rather how I've seen people come together to try to support each other in new ways, support the community in new ways. The city has reached out, community members have reached out, business owners have reached out. We have problems solved together. We've thought about creative solutions. At Stout, that's what is important to us. That's what we teach our students. It's what you all help us to teach our students. I hope that, I hope that we can continue as we move forward through this because there's no way through it, but through it. And there's no way through it, but together, right? That on the other side, we find ourselves in a better position. A stronger institution and a stronger community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Catherine. Appreciate that. We have enough time for a couple more speakers and we're going to keep moving with our meeting. So come up to the podium, name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Collins. I live at E 5431 County Road BB in Menominee. I had written out a whole long thing this afternoon, but I'm going to stray from it a little bit based on what's been talked about tonight. I do want to say at first, as to what she just said, masks work. We've been in school at Stout for what, a week and a half now? There's not enough data to prove that the masks are working. Masks have its virtue signaling. It creates a false security. It is playing defense rather than being on the offense. What, what simple things could our local health department, KT Gallagher? What can we do to promote health? Not one time did I hear KT talk about upping your vitamin D levels, getting plenty of sun. Eating healthy, drinking plenty of water, staying active. These are all things. We need community. We cannot expect people to socially distance from each other for six months and for them to remain mentally healthy. So all we've heard is stay six feet from each other, wear your mask, hold out for a vaccine. Is that, is that the end game here? What, what is the end game in all of this? So if you extended to December 31st, is that in hopes that we find the all holy vaccine to cure everybody? We haven't even found a flu vaccine that works yet. And it's been years. Creates false hope in people. There's so many that succumb every day to cancer, flu, diabetes. Heart disease is the number one killer, okay? We should be promoting disease prevention. A mask is not the answer. Healthy lifestyle, okay? I just want to share something on a personal level. I have a son who just came in from deployment and I flew to San Diego last week. We know the restrictions in California, correct? To that point, I had not worn a mask except for maybe five minutes. While I was there, I had continuous migraine headaches. I got a yeast infection on my tongue, which made it impossible for me to enjoy any of the meals I had with my son. Why is that? I have an autoimmune disease called chronic Lyme disease. My children have congenital Lyme disease. A lot of people are walking around with Lyme disease right now and they don't know they have it. And same with their children. It has been proven that masks, when you wear them, cause a cytokine storm. I don't know if you know what that is, but it causes an autoimmune reaction in people that already have underlying autoimmune diseases. It's been proven that COVID is an inflammatory autoimmune virus. It is causing people to have residual symptoms for months afterwards that weren't related to the respiratory infection. So all I'm saying is, all I'm saying is, please consider all people in the community. I understand that this is a real virus. I understand people have died, but the data does not back up muzzling our entire population. Even though they may have underlying conditions. It could kill me. And if I wear a mask, it makes me sick. Thank you.
Okay. Jennifer, how do you spell cytokine storm?
Cytokine storm.
How, how, how is it spelled or how can I find it?
C Y T O K I N E.
C Y?
T O.
T O.
K I N E. And that is actually directly from Dr. Fauci and Dr. Judy Mikovits.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Eddy?
Teresa Johnson, Teresa Johnson, your mic is open. You have the floor. If you give your name and address, please.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yep.
I'm not actually Teresa. I'm Don Johnson.
Okay.
Address is E 5034 429th Avenue. And I just wanted to talk quickly as adults here. Most of the businesses in our community already have a requirement to wear masks. We, you see it on their signs, you see it on their doors. Everybody walks in typically with a mask on. Most people understand that they have to follow that rule because they're going into someone's business. So I don't think we have a severe problem with people not wearing masks. And I feel that we're going a little bit overboard here. The other part that caught my attention was, it sounds like this proposal in this whole discussion. Is to allow UW Stout to have more bites, according to the Dean of Students, to have more bites on the students that live off campus. That to me is concerning. She's trying to restrict a person's life outside the campus. While she's doing that, she's trying to control those students along with possibly destroying businesses. Which is very damaging. So which is better for us to damage all of the businesses in our community? Or to maybe restrict what UW Stout is doing?
Okay.
If we're going to shut down anything, let's go to the root cause. The root cause is the higher number of COVID cases in UW Stout students. We need to call a spade a spade. That's exactly what we're dealing with. We have a high number of students with positives and this is causing our problem right now. So let's correct it at Stout. So if we're going to shut down anything, let's, let's. Let the professors live without their income, just like they expect the rest of us business owners to live without our income. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, Don. We're, we're winding down here. I guess we have, can we have one more speaker? We have time for. We're, 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 we're on a situation here, but go ahead and take the.
My name is Mike Dusso, 1501 Stout Street. I took it off for a reason. I can breathe. I wear this eight hours a night at work because it's required by our policies. Okay. You're trying to, you're trying to do an ordinance, create an ordinance for masks. Okay, a number of questions. One, who's going to enforce it? Our police department? I see, I see a representative here. We have the city attorney. What are you going to do about it if somebody does it? What is, what are the consequences? No one seems to know. If you have an outline and a plan, we'd like to hear it. Okay, pretty simple. Mask for a reason. I wear it eight hours a night. I step outside, it comes off. We, we have no active cases in my work. There's a number of businesses here. The mask, I believe, is going to hurt a lot of these businesses. That's an outside business because most people are going to be six feet of your construction, or if you're a recreational sport. I get that. This is just some questions you guys need to ponder. What are you going to do about it? What are the consequences? Who's going to enforce it? Are we going to have our police department just go into a establishment or a restaurant and say, you're under arrest or here's a fine? Is it going to be like Minnesota where one business person had a mask on, a wrong mask or a shield, got fined $7,000? Are you going to do that? This is a small town in Menominee. Let's, let's really think hard about this. Let's not make a quick decision. This special session came on real sudden. I would have made a big form out of it. Have an hour or two hour on it. Forty-five minutes isn't long enough for this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mike. You know what? We're, we're going to allow you to speak because you've been patiently waiting, but we really need to wrap this up and, and appreciate. I know what I appreciate everybody's dialogue here tonight, really. But go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, I appreciate it. My name is Sarah Bachland. Um, my friend Jen asked me to come down because she knows that we've been looking at houses in this area of the Menominee. The one who has the actual data and knows her stuff. So I just wrote a little something up before coming. I stand you before you today in regards, I'm sorry, skip that, to the mask mandate, um, which I want to say I stand in opposition to. The political game that COVID has turned into is appalling. The lies, corruption and manipulation behind COVID are wide, and yet you sit here before me and before your own constituents, either blind or complicit to this. This nation was founded on liberty and independence and not on government force or coercion. It is sad really, because you're showing your, the arm of tyranny. When the people are afraid of the government, that is called tyranny. And when the government is afraid of the people, that is called liberty. A few of you here seem to fear no reprisal from we, the people. Rest assured that many, many more people who are not here that I heard about are very upset over this. I think of the recall going on right now with Governor Evers. We, the people, are recalling him for his overreach. Some are suing him for going against our constitutional rights. We can do the same to you. They can. Don't think they won't. It is an unacceptable overreach. You must know the US Constitution. It states that the promotion of the general welfare, hear that again, that word, promotion, not enforcement. You are not to force or enforce the general welfare of the public, but rather to promote it only. Yet this is what you want to do. You took an oath to uphold the Constitution. How have you gotten here? I have to say shame on those of you who are working to push this mandates on your constituents. You are here to work for them, not against them. You are here to promote liberty and independence. The arrogance you exude when you think you can make choices for them as a whole, instead of allowing them to make the choices for themselves as individuals is appalling. It is. I ask that you hear their voices today. I ask that you remember back when you were running for election. Can you hear yourself saying, I want to be the representative of the people? I want to hear, I want to listen to their voices. Well, here they are. They're speaking. Are you listening?
Ally, can you take that? Okay, thank you, Sarah. I'm going to excuse. Yeah, I'm going to excuse Mr. ID and Mr. Prangy, or Mr. ID is going to go upstairs to, to host another meeting at seven o'clock. And so I'm going to close public comments and move on with the rest of our meeting. And I want to thank you. I really, I do. I want to thank you for being here. I want to thank you for telling your story and, and your side of the story. You know, I understand. I truly do. You know, we have a small business. It was shut down for two months. My wife's a, a healthcare provider at a, at an assisted living. Those are my people in there that I cannot go see. Uh, I cannot entertain. I sing in two barbershop quartets. I love to go to the nursing homes and assisted livings and entertain people, uh, put smiles on their faces. I hate these darn masks. I'm with you guys on the, you know, having to deal with masks. We are, what we're doing is trying to get feedback from the community right now, this evening. This is what we're all about, is listening to you, and I want to thank you, thank you for being here.
Let's see, how many people are out there? Couple hundred, three hundred, to how many negatives we had on the phone?
Right.
You better be listening to this for beautiful.
Okay, and, and I'm going to keep. We, we, we're going to keep this, we have to, we have to keep this meeting moving, okay? Just understand that. There's a lot of negatives. There's a lot of negatives to this, this. This, this, this virus thing has got us all in a, in a tizzy. It is a bad thing. There is no good that can come out of this virus. That is absolute definite. There is not one good thing that can come out of this virus. However, however, what we have here tonight is the ability to express ourselves, which we are doing, which you are doing, and I totally appreciate that. We are not here to say we are going to do this or we are not going to do this. We are here tonight to listen to the public and make as rational decision as possible. And, 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 and that's what it's all about. It truly, really is. Um, we are, we are here tonight and we are in the middle of this meeting. Excuse me. We are going to, um, open it up for discussion from council, and we're going to move this forward. But I, however it goes, you know, I totally appreciate everybody's input, uh, the, the names. The, uh, interesting cytokine storm, very interesting. I appreciate that. And there's a lot of other good information too tonight that was shared by everybody, uh, you know, so I appreciate that. Okay, I'm going to bring it into the council. Council, do you have any, um, anything that you might want to add to this or say tonight? Uh, Chad?
Can I make a motion?
Well, you can make a motion if you'd like. I thought we'd have a little bit of discussion beforehand, but, uh, go ahead.
I'd like to make a.
Oh, excuse me.
Randy.
Eric, is that you?
Yes, I'm sorry. I thought I was unmuted. I do have a statement I'd like to say.
Okay, Eric, let's, let's have Eric say what you're thinking.
Okay, very good. I've taken some notes. It's very, obviously a very difficult situation, but I'll just try to go through my notes. And, uh, basically what I've got here is some, some feedback I've received from the, some of the community members and some of the stuff that got mentioned tonight. So I'd like to begin today with wishing everyone a happy Constitution Day. Yes, 9/17 is National Constitution Day. Freedom of association and assembly, freedom of religion and freedom of speech. These are just some of the freedoms afforded in our Bill of Rights. And of course, the cornerstone of our republic is, we have the right to life, liberty and the pursuit of happiness. And with that, I think one concern is that we need to ensure or remember, remind ourselves that our rights are not given to us by the government. It's stated in the Constitution. So the government has no power to take those rights away. Secondly, unfortunately, as far as I'm concerned and many constituents I've talked to, this issue has become politicized nationally, statewide, and many folks are perceiving that this, this is also now a locally politicized issue. And that's why there is so much, um, resistance to, to this. Thirdly, I got a lot of feedback, and, and what I am stating is known. Um, I think a lot of people would agree that this is something that, um, is perceived by many of the folks in our community and our state and our nation, and that people do not trust the government or the media to tell them the truth. Um, fourth, um, you know, and someone stated earlier, and I don't know if it was Sarah or, I mean, I think it was Sarah. The biggest issue I think most folks have concerning this mask mandate is government overreach. They've been seeing it for years and maybe decades, and people are sick of it. And I think that's the biggest problem. The government needs to stay out of people's lives, and I think that would help a lot of the situation. And with that, I will not support this mandate. I think it's a government overreach. Let people live their lives. Let people make decisions on their own. And that's all I have, Randy. Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank, thank you, Eric. Um, I see more hands up. Jeff Luther? Jeff Luther, you got your hand up?
Yeah, just trying to unmute there. You know, I, I realize the importance of masks and everything, and, uh, heard a lot of people seeing a lot of positives for the mask, um, a lot of people against the mask and stuff. Right now, you know, I, I'm on either side of this, but as far as the information we got and what we've heard from the people and stuff, I think I would like to make a motion that we take no action on adopting this, um, ordinance tonight and, um, maybe look at it in a future date, um, down the road when we find out what the governor is going to do about, um, his mandate ending at the end of this month and, uh, get back in a future meeting.
Okay, so you're, you, you're making that as a motion?
I'm making a motion to not take any action on this tonight and to bring it back and add a future meeting when, uh, you know, it's.
Yeah, next time we'll triple the amount of people that'll be here.
Okay, so motion's been made. Is there a second to that motion?
I would like, I would like to second that.
Okay, Jan Traxler with a second. Okay, uh, additional discussion. Okay, you, is there any hands? Oh, Ryland, I'm sorry. Ryland, go ahead, please.
Um, yeah, so there was a comparison about, you know, if a plane crashed, we wouldn't ground all planes, but right now in the United States, there's equivalent of 50 planes crashing worth of people every day dying. Um, so if 50 planes were crashing every day, I think we'd do something about it. We happen to be in a fairly isolated part of the country and have been pretty lucky so far, but with the, with the increase in population from the university and the start of cold and flu season where people are spending more times indoors, um, I don't see this getting any better at all. It was, there was the comparison of, um, things like heart disease being overlooked, but deaths from the coronavirus have overtaken deaths from heart disease. We.
Okay, uh, you know.
We don't, we don't claim that.
Give these folks the respect. They, they're, we're all in this situation together. Understand that, please. Okay, um, Ryland, thank you. Um, you got a number of hands up. Randy, you got your hand up? Go ahead, Randy.
We don't claim that fire codes are infringing on our freedoms. Um, they're there for our safeties. So how can limiting building capacity for other reasons, um, be infringing on our safety?
Okay, Mr. Summerfield?
Right, um, I don't see expecting people or asking people to wear a mask is any different than having them wear shoes and shirt when they go into a business. I don't see wearing a mask as making people hostage. I, I can't understand how that makes a person feel like a hostage, so.
That's right.
Okay. Please, please, please. Robin, Robin, go ahead, please.
Um, I guess I'm a little disappointed. I've been nervous all day.
I'm sorry, everybody. You know, we have to really be gentle here.
This is what's been bothering me today is the emails, the phone calls, and it's so non-respectful. And this isn't an easy decision. You know, we were elected to do what's best we feel for the county, and we do the best with what we have. My constituents are students. And when I talk to them, they don't mind the man, mask mandate. They go, we have to wear it on campus. They all do. They wear it in my neighborhood. They're not on campus. They knew it would be the community, and Stout is a huge economic impact on our community. We need them. We need to work together. And what I'm hearing from the meeting tonight, I'm glad I'm not there, it's, we all need to be in this together. And the yelling and the saying, you're right, I'm wrong, whatever. I just would like us to try and come up with a solution together in a nice way and respectful way.
Well, and Robin, maybe, maybe we can work on this and come up with something in the future. Um, so that we can probably move this forward, um, to whoever else has got their hand up. Uh, Nate, go ahead, please.
Yeah, um, I guess I would like to start off by, I feel bad for Chad because he was the first one that was going to speak and then we kind of cut him off. Which is, uh, just side note. Um, but anyway, I do want to say that I, you know, I, I am very pleased to, I understand the frustration, um, and how it can be a bit of an inconvenience, but I do really appreciate everybody voicing their opinion. I do really love the fact that people are gathering, that people are sharing, you know, their ideals, uh, their passions and protecting the Constitution, because that is something that is a right that is given to us the second we are born. But something else that I do want to bring a point to is just in the sense that, you know, we are human. We are very resilient. We're very flexible, creative, and we can overcome any problem that is thrown our way. I do believe that the energy that we have used, uh, in voicing our opinion and the energy that has been demonstrated to fight back and forth is something that we could redirect. I believe if we were redirected all of our energy into creative solutions, um, and some, you know, just problem resolution and begin to think about a future that might, you know, require these, um, suggestions, these very strong suggestions, uh, that we would be making. I am in support of, uh, bringing this up at a later time, um, and hopefully by then we will have more time to express some creative solutions. Um, my inbox is always open. I would love to have, you know, some dialogue. If that is the case, you may find my phone number. But again, I understand everybody's opinion. I understand both sides of the opinion. But I am more focused, I'm less focused on hearing opinions and more focused on creative solutions. So, thank you.
Thank you, Nathan. Jan Traxler, you have your hand up?
Yes, is there, instead of an ordinance, would it be possibility of having a resolution to strongly encourage use of a mask within buildings and enclosed spaces that are accessible to the public?
Okay, thank you, Jan. Uh, let's see, who else has your hand up? Mary?
Yes, um, I would, I agree with what, a lot of what people have already, the council have already said. You know, we're all under, un, unseen of, you know, um, stress and anxiety and issues that, that are totally new to most of us. And this is an unprecedented pandemic, unless you lived through the 1918 Spanish Flu. So we can't begin to know where this is going to end. And that causes more angst. Now, they mentioned, somebody mentioned the arrogance of us, you know, thinking that we can sit in, in, uh, you know, and rule over people, but there, there is no arrogance on this council. Um, I for one, and I can only speak for myself, but, uh, I'm scared to death of, of where this is going to end and what should we be doing to, to help prevent, help slow down, help flatten the curve? And I understand, I've got friends that are in business downtown. I totally, totally understand. But I think there has to be, there has to be more reasoning in what can be a positive compromise. And as for that little outburst, I have to say that I understand the frustration. I understand the anger. But the fact is, there is such a lack of respect from you folks that it's very disheartening. And we're only, we're only trying to do what is right. So cut us some slack here. Uh, we were elected to do what's good for Menominee, and that's what we're trying to do. So maybe a little more respect would go a lot further. Thank you.
Okay, Mary, thank you. Uh, any other council members, uh, have anything they want to say or otherwise? Jeff, I, I appreciate your. Jeff, I, I appreciate your motion, you know, perhaps, I, I understand your motion, but we could have the opportunity to bring this back if we need to. However, in the meantime, perhaps there's some other developments that could come forward. And I, I just question if you want to continue with the motion as it is, or if you'd really rather direct your motion to to take out the caveat of bringing it back, whereas if we needed to, we could. So I'm gonna just bring that back to Jeff, and you can answer that, please.
You wanted me?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Jeff.
Change the motion to what?
Well, I just wondering if your motion, if, if, if you're sincere on bringing it back date specific, or bringing it back, or if you'd rather just let it go and we bring it back if we need to in the future? Is that what you're thinking?
I would.
Can you clarify your motion, please?
Okay. I would like to bring this back in the future if needed. Is that what you'd like to hear?
Well, I just needed clarification, that's all.
Okay.
Okay, and, and, who was the second? Jan, you seconded that, is that the motion that you would agree to second?
Yes, yes, that would be fine.
Okay. All right, so the motion then would be not to, to postpone any. I'm gonna let Mr. Prangie read it, please.
I'll try. The motion was made by Luther, seconded by Traxler, to postpone any action on the face covering ordinance until a future meeting if needed. So what was the motion at this point?
Okay. So with that being said, any other council members have any other discussion? Ryland, go ahead, please.
Can I get some clarification on the proposed ordinance? Reading it over today, read it out loud to my family here, because they were interested in hearing what was in it, and it seemed very close to what the governor's mask mandate said. So I'm wondering if it, there seemed to be some fear that it was going to be significantly more restrictive, or, you know, that it was going to be ordering businesses closed. Is any of that in that, or is it pretty much worded along lines of what the governor, governor's mask mandate was?
I'm gonna let City Attorney Ben handle that, please.
Ryland, it is, it was drafted around what Governor Evers had in his order, so it is similar to that. The items that you just indicated were not included in the ordinance as proposed.
Does that answer your question, Ryland? Okay. All right, additional discussion? Robin, go ahead, please.
Hi, I was just wondering if people could give us possible solutions, instead of just saying no, just say, what would, let us know what they would do if they were in our shoe. What would they do? And, yeah.
Well, and Robin, I, I appreciate the, the motion, because that does give us the time to work through some possible other solutions. And I think that maybe, I don't know if Jeff had that in mind, but I think that's a great idea. I think talking about this, bringing it forward, maybe there's some other better solutions. Somebody was outside today and showed me a, a different kind of headgear without a mask. And, and I actually, I would like to waive the rules, if I may. Council, I'd like to have a motion to waive the rules to hear from one of our constituents, council. Anybody make a motion?
I'll make a motion to waive the rules.
Okay, Robin, Sweeney with the motion, is there a second to that motion? Mary Solberg?
I'll second Robin's motion.
Okay, all in favor of said motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Would you show us your, and you can come on up, or somebody? Yeah, there she is, right behind you. And if you could come up and just show us, and actually, I'm gonna, I'm going to, if you could just bring that up here, I would like to take a picture of this, because I think something like this could possibly take the place of some masks, and so I just want to show you what this looks like. You know, it, it may not be a perfect remedy, but it is something to be cognizant of. There's perhaps some other better ideas out there than masks, and could you come this way so I could take a picture of you? Oh, there we go. Can you see that? Can, can you, anybody see what that looks like? It's a, it's a clear shield that goes from the chin up over the mouth, over the nose, it's a little opposite of the normal. And, you know, so that, there could be a lot of other ideas floating out there that we're not aware of yet. So I think Jeff's motion has merit to postpone this. Well, you know, I just think that it's an idea factor. I think that when we have ideas that come forward, I think that's a big plus. So, and I, and I, and I'm not saying this is a forced issue, excuse me. I thank you for bringing that up. Anyways, I just wanted to point that out, that perhaps Jeff's motion has merit in that we can take time to find out other solutions or other remedies. And so I guess with that, I would bring it back to council for other suggestions and or discussion. Mary, go ahead, please.
I have a question for our city attorney. Ben, the ordinance that was drafted, somebody brought up, how are we gonna enforce it? Can you answer how it would be enforced?
Thank you, Mary. Ben?
Mary, it would be similar to what's happening right now. As drafted, it would just be individuals or entities that fail to comply with the ordinance would be referred to the Dunn County Department of Health. They would have the ability to basically use what's in their authority. Can have the chief further elaborate too. If individuals aren't complying in private entities or businesses, they would have the ability. Law enforcement may be involved at that point, but it would be really discretion within law enforcement. It'd be similar to what's happening now with the current order under Governor Evers. And I don't know if the chief wanted to elaborate.
Okay, thank you, Ben. Okay, and now it's gonna bring this back to council. Mary, you've got your hand up?
Yeah, I do, Ben is a follow-up, but the, the business owners have some say in what goes on in their own business, right?
Well, they should, but you're trying to make it so they can't.
If the ordinance passed, it would be required in the businesses that you're speaking of right now.
Okay, does that answer your question, Mary?
Yep.
Okay. Others, council members, do you have any other discussion?
Yes, please, please read the, please read the motion.
Okay, I'll have Mr. Prangie or City Administrator read the motion. Go ahead, Mr. Prangie.
Motion by Luther, seconded by Traxler, to postpone action on a face covering ordinance until a future meeting if determined necessary by the administration.
Okay, is that clear to everybody?
I'm unmuted.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring it back to council one last time. Eric, you got your hand up?
No, I do not have my hand up, I'm just ready to vote.
Okay, my mistake. Okay. I think Jeff's got a valuable, a valued motion, and so then we would take it to council. We're gonna do a roll call vote, so that if you vote yes, you are voting affirmative with his motion of postponement. If you, if you vote no, then we could have subsequent motion. But anyways, we will do this at this point as a roll call, so go ahead, please.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Sweeney?
Yes.
Schwabs?
No.
Merrill?
Yes.
Solberg?
No.
Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman?
No.
Summerfeld?
No.
Luther?
Yes.
Traxler?
Yes.
It passed six to four.
Okay, it's six five, or six to four? Okay, it passed six to four, so at this time, we will not be acting on a mask ordinance in the city of Menominee. And I so appreciate everybody's dialogue here tonight. I just, I, I just really think it's important that everybody in the community understands, this is how it's supposed to be. People are supposed to be able to express themselves, they're supposed to be able to spend time talking to the elected officials, and we do appreciate that. I do appreciate that, and I know others appreciate that. We have some, we have the rest of our meeting, oh, I have an announcement to make too, I have to announce this really quick. The airport meeting that is supposed to be here tonight at seven o'clock is on the third floor at this time, and we are running behind for that particular meeting. And so I would probably move, hold on just a second. Okay, in, in time, in essence of time, I think that we would probably take six B and move it to a future date. And then as far as the mayor's report, there's just a lot of really good things happening in Menominee. I appreciate Menominee, I think Menominee is the best place in the world to live. I was born and raised here, and, and I'm, and I'm one of all of us, we are all in this together. And thank you for coming tonight. With that, I would need a motion from the council to postpone talking talking about six B tonight in, in a limitation of time. Anybody would like to make that motion? Jeff Luther, you got your hand up?
I'll make the motion to postpone item six B.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I second that, Randy.
Okay, motion been made and seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. That brings us down to the mayor's report. Well, the dredging was completed in Wolfski's Bay, so that's a big plus for Menominee. Ellsworth Creamery has, has signed the papers, they are coming to our town, they will be building a cheese factory out in their industrial park. There is also a development going on in our industrial park with a large metal for bridges and so forth. More jobs for both of those two. We also have new banners, of course, you've probably seen those in town. Hold on just a second. The, the flashing beacons that you see crossing the streets, those, more of those are in place. There is a opportunity for anybody that would like to see the four lanes down to three lanes on Stout Road, if you'd like to go to the, the website. Charlie, can you fill us in where that website is at located? DOT?
It's a DOT website, yes.
DOT website? So if you'd like to see the road initiatives on Stout Road that goes past Culvers, you may want to pull up the DOT website and take a look at that. And it is linked on the city of Menominee's website. There is a lot of other great things going on in Menominee, and we do appreciate everybody's feedback. So thank you for coming tonight, and thank you for being here. With, with that, thank you. With that, we don't have any claims, we don't have any licenses, so no closed session tonight. So a motion to adjourn would be appropriate, if anybody'd like to make the motion, Nate, go ahead.
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, a motion to adjourn by Nate, is there a second to that motion? Jeff Luther?
I'll second Nate's motion to adjourn.
All in favor of said motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you, everybody.